When does Doug start?
You start. DeSires City Joint Regular Committee Meeting for Thursday, August 22, 2019. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Struca, Monica Sack, Andrew Shocker, and myself. First up, DeSires City Joint Regular Committee Meeting is called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. Up first, we have public participation. Anybody from the public that would like to discuss any business on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address.
If it's an item that's going to be already on the agenda, we'd ask you to wait until we come to that part of the meeting because that's how everything's lined up for tonight's meeting. But if someone has something else they want to address, now's the time to do it.
When are you going to start with?
We're starting with the U.S. Census.
Census?
Yeah, I'm just going to take about a minute and a half. Okay.
A buddy? All right. So up first, we have Economic Development. I will call that to order at 6:01 PM. In your packet, we have about the U.S. Census. Would you like me to read this?
No.
No?
The what is going on with this is every 10 years per the Constitution, there is a census that is taken. And the last one was done in 2010, 2020 is the next census that needs to be done. They originally started out with a group that they wanted the entire county under one umbrella for the whole census, and then after some discussion, so that we could keep the cities' numbers separate, but they all come together in the end as the county, but so we could see all the city numbers individually, we decided to set up a complete county committee for just the city of DeSires. And there's a piece of legislation that's attached to your packet to this, and that's basically, we have to have this one saying we are going to participate, and I get that to the census representative then.
So are we looking for a motion to take this to full council then?
Yeah, we need a motion to create the legislation. Yes. Second?
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. With that, I will recess Economic Development at 6:03 PM.
Thank you.
I will call plating orders at 6:03. All right. Change the order to get some of these other ones out of the way quickly. ODOT paving for your road. This is just a formality. We have the largest dust dis amount ever. We have to approve this section of Route 4. Oh, which we surveyed from Route 4. From Route 4, State 19, Dusky Avenue, Sidesale Corporation Corporation, so it's Quaker Road. And our portion of that is $10,155.78 is the estimate.
No, that is the final number from ODOT.
That is the final.
The original number given to us was $5,400.
Oh, that's right.
And it has grown since then. We only appropriated $6,000. So there's going to have to be another appropriation that should be included with the auditor's request for appropriation. And what you need to do is, okay, this resolution, they send us a copy of that, and this is what they're expecting to receive back. So we need to vote to take care of that piece of business.
And if there's no questions, we don't have really a chance to. Otherwise, we put them out. So if there's no other discussion or questions, entertain a motion to accept this at the revised cost of $10,155.78, then we defer to finance. So move. Robert, second.
My turn.
All those in favor say aye.
Hold on now.
Wait, I think Bruce or...
I'm studying economics.
So.
I get this thing.
Okay. Bruce with the... Monica with... Monica's second, Kevin's first. Okay. Any questions? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. All right. The ODOT Municipal Bridge Inspection Program Review.
Review. It's a regional one?
Yes, it's a regional. So hasn't been any changes to this, if my understanding is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This bridge inspection, is this going to be part of the Mary Street inspection?
I don't...
Because right now, I mean, we've already, we've identified it as being sufficient, so...
I'm not sure. We've got three bridges we talked about. I'm not sure what this legislation is for, exactly what it's for. This authorizes the service director to enter into a contract with the state Department of Transportation to do inspections. And it's a state, so I'm assuming they're 100% all the bridge inspection. I talked with Randstadter after our last meeting about it. The bridges have been inspected, so he's going to have a report coming out on this. The Mary Street's one we were talking about. This isn't, this is to do the inspection. This might be some... You know, Rob?
I don't. Reading the thing, the letter, it looks like this is just the total program.
Right.
So it's participating in the ODOT program. It's a news every few years.
That the state pays for it.
Yeah, so this is the specific, this is just participation in the entire state program.
And that probably doesn't do all the bridges by now.
Yeah, they inspect all the bridges. So it's just participating in that program. It's not pretty much specific bridges for the total program.
All right. There are... If they have any questions or any other comments? If not, entertain a motion to enter into this contract with the state to assume all rights and due to inspections at the cost of... And either first and second. Any other discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All the same sign? I heard both of you, Kevin's voting.
Can I speak up?
Okay. We're going to the classified ordinance of permanent signs. All right. Do you need me to read this? It's addressed from the mayor.
Dear Landon?
From Landon, I'm sorry. From Landon, in regards to the sign ordinance classification. Dear Council President, I have received interest from multiple parties regarding the installation of new signs at their businesses located in the downtown business DB zoning district. In researching the request, I found that a currently, that has currently written the sign ordinance to restrict the installation of any sign in the vast majority of the DB. Very sign types are permitted in the DB, including wall canopy and/or awning, projecting, and freestanding, however, per VCO 1191.08 H3. No part of any sign shall be placed in, over, or extend on to public right-of-way in most cases. In the DB, the property line is directly in line with the front of the structure. Thus, any sign installed on said structures would be over the right-of-way line, and committed as an administrator, I am asking with enforcing these, I am tasked with enforcing these ordinances as written, which would result in requesting for sign permits being denied, and requesting classification regarding the ordinance as to whether this is an oversight or the intended outcome of the ordinance. Thank you.
Can you give me an example of what that is that happened?
As in, any of the signs down there that are already existing, their grandfather, the state has right-of-way. When we had to discuss about the sidewalks and this was before I was on council, when they did the downtown revitalization, the state has public right-of-way all the way up to the threshold of every building. That's how wide the right-of-way is through downtown. So any sign that's one you can put in there now, if you have this zone and all by their rules, you can't put it there because it's over public right-of-way. We're trying to discuss about allowing it because the state said where our curve is at now, if I'm not misunderstanding this, I believe they said they were not going to encroach on requiring more right-of-way.
You might ask Landon to address it.
Yeah, Landon. Yeah. The letter basically says...
Would you introduce yourself to everybody? They don't all know who you are.
Yeah. My name is Landon Hill. I'm the zoning administrator for the city of DeSires. The letter basically explains what the issue is, basically just an inconsistency. The specific example would be the Red Wing Store downtown, and then there's another business in the 100 block of North Sandusky Avenue that's requesting to put a sign. The inconsistency comes from while wall signs, projecting signs, canopy awning signs, and freestanding signs are all permitted in the downtown business district, it's impossible to put them in because the location requirement requires that they be located outside of the right-of-way. So in most cases for downtown business district structures, the face of the building meets exactly with the right-of-way. Anything put on the face of the building, in theory, would be over top of the right-of-way. So what I was asking for is clarification as to, and I know most of you didn't design these laws, but clarification as to what law was intended to do and how you would like to enforce it moving forward. My personal feeling is that, you know, some of those types of signs are part of the charm of the downtown business district, but personal feelings for me don't come into effect, so I have to enforce it if it's written. Whether or not it is simply a, can simply be achieved by installing some kind of exemption provision for the downtown business district as it relates to the location and the right-of-way, or whether you need, we need to specifically go through each type of sign and then kind of stipulate what requirements we want to see them meet when they are going to be projecting over into the right-of-way, I would leave that up to you guys at this point, but...
Bruce, you have questions?
Well, I was part of that reconstruction way back there, and, you know, like First Federal, they were exempted because they were already existing. And same way with one very old one, the building where Bakers at, they were exempted too. But it was a, it was kind of a cloudy issue way back then even because, you know, we had the understanding that the state said, you know, really it was up to them, but they kind of threw it back in our lap, stating that, well, it's really not, it's really not the state that's calling the shots, it's the city of DeSires that can call the shots, whether, what you want to be able to do when it comes to allowing stuff into the right-of-way.
Would it be fair to ask for you and Mr. Ratliff to get together and maybe come up with a sample of what you believe could be changed in this ordinance that would allow, we're looking for, to actually create a clarification and then bring it back to this committee?
If you prefer it to be done that way, I would not be opposed to it. If members of the plating committee would like to join us, I would welcome you as well.
Sure.
It could be a matter of, you know, just walking downtown and maybe taking some measurements of what we have existing and seeing what might fit in going forward. But yeah, however you guys want to proceed, it's... I would just like a clarification so I can let these business owners, you know, develop their property as they're allowed to through the code.
And I think one thing that a work session would be appropriate because there's a lot of things to consider, height, you know, head banging, weight, structure, things, you know, hanging out over that right-of-way, you know, how far out into the right-of-way. There's a lot of things to consider, so yeah, a new work session kind of go over all this. Maybe certainly write it up anyway, but, you know, limiting it, you know, kind of defining what you want.
Next week, what would work for you two and the rest of us?
If all of you are going to be there, it's going to have to be an announced meeting?
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
We already have one scheduled for next week.
Yeah, but I don't want to even talk about it.
No.
That's, that's public lands and buildings, and that's not real life anymore.
As I recall, though, most of the rest of the week was scheduled without, everybody else had conflicts with the rest of the week. There were different people at different times that had conflicts, like your meet, your group.
Could we have an actual meeting, walkway down the street, or should we only just send two of us with them to do that?
Your choice.
I mean, it's publicly announced, I mean, you can hold it in a special meeting, you can hold it. Or maybe in a park where you can see most of the sun, if you want to.
I'm available every day as long as it's after 6:00.
Right.
Or at least at 6:00, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
You're kind of out of there, Mike, other than Monday. Okay. Kevin?
I'm good Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah, like, Wednesday's sound good for your group?
Sure.
Landon, is that good for you?
Should be. What time are you thinking?
Six.
Probably. Or go make sure I have a babysitter.
Okay, we're going to meet at the art part.
Bring in the art.
I'll just come meet you over here, I'll watch you do what you guys do.
Okay, we're going to meet at the art part, so...
So it's still a public meeting, no?
Right. But we'll make the meeting at the art part.
Wednesday is 28.
Because it's more than two of us, so that'd be a meeting.
One dead.
Okay. All right, well, we'll...
Just as an idea to throw out before we move on to the next item, could that be something that would have to go before, like, one of the planning commission or something like that, that you could integrate that into this whole idea?
You mean for their review?
Yeah. I mean, so plans come in, and the planning commission would review it, and I'm thinking that way you get a set of eyes that aren't all people that are always here at City Hall, but they're, they're neighbors and friends from out in the community that sit on the planning commission.
Effectively, a sign in the downtown business district that would be projecting over the right-of-way would become a conditional use of the downtown business district.
Yeah.
Picks on the oversight office.
Okay, that's just an idea you might want to stick out there.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Don't sit out. I'm not going for it.
All right. Classified ordinance, 1191.07, temporary signs.
No, you're doing...
I'm giving grid to the right of that.
Let's, because there's going to be a huge discussion on that, let's get these others done first, shall we? That order they're in?
All right. All right. Sidewalk construction requirements. This is regards to the property on East Mansfield Street where the new Burger King is going to be located. All right, who are you turning this over to?
Landon.
Landon, let's go again.
Short break. So the first part of this is a function of the location of the proposed sidewalk for the new Burger King development. On East Mansfield Street, because of where the right-of-way exists, as well as an old highway easement that was a part of when it was still over Route 30, the location of the sidewalk can't be placed where it is supposed to be for the building code, which is 12 inches on the opposite side of the property line from the property. In those cases, in those cases, it can go one of two ways. If they're requesting that it be moved further out into the right-of-way, that can actually go to the planning commission, but in this case, because that is not the case, it requires a resolution from council to allow it to stay on there. So that would be the first part of it, and then Rob and I have just discussed building a couple of changes into the code to go along with it that we've been looking at for a while.
So the first piece, we would ask this committee to, per resolution approving the sidewalk placement as shown in the Burger King drawings, because our ordinance requires a resolution approving them.
So that's the sidewalk that's going to be going down Mansfield Street and also the one that's going down Penn Avenue.
The one on Penn Avenue is okay.
Okay.
It's going to have that 12 inches from the right-of-way line, it's simply the one that's on East Mansfield Street that requires the resolution.
Okay.
And why does it have to have a resolution? Explain that to me on East Mansfield Street. How far inside the roadway will the sidewalk be?
It's not in the roadway, it's actually further away from the roadway.
It's up into their property, what the resolution is for.
Well, the reason I ask is that I'm, I'm so pro sidewalk out there on East Mansfield Street, that, you know, I just seen a lady last night in a wheelchair, and she was right in the street because even though, you know, we had that pathway put in, on Wayne Avenue is just sort of a standard curve, and so she couldn't even, even use that blocked out right-of-way because of the standard curve, no way, so...
So this is...
How much farther inside the current walk path that we have now?
There's no sidewalks on either block, nobody can...
I would say it would be inside of that.
Right, but I mean, I would like to be able to see if I could line it up or make it convenient for the people, because in my award, I have a lot of people going to Walmart and, you know...
I mean, I believe it would be inside that towards the property, but at that point, they would just kind of jump over and get to the sidewalk, and then they're putting the handicap accessible going down on the Penn. They're actually going to put in a concrete apron that's going to encompass that alley as well, and so they'll basically jump off the walking path on that concrete apron, up onto the sidewalk, and follow through like they always have now.
So then that'll take the slope out of the, out of the sidewalk area?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're taking a lot of dirt out of that, it's not going to sit nearly as high as it does now.
Let's say right now it's very steep.
Yeah, they're leveling that off from out of the, and so I think that is going to be much more accessible.
Something like four feet of dirt is coming out.
Coming off.
Yeah.
Now, it just kind of like, it hurts way off of Mansfield Street, I mean, will they flatten it out, like where it comes off of Mansfield Street, will sidewalk actually have a flatness to it instead of a slope?
Yeah.
Well, that's something I knew about, looked at it today, that I was going to ask you, this might be another topic for another time, but the property that's, the residence, it's just to the west of this location, it's for sale, right? You know, sidewalk ends at Wayne, you know, if we're putting a sidewalk in, I think it would be hubris to try to get a sidewalk into that property as well, so that when you're coming out, you know, and you hit Wayne, then there's no more sidewalk, then you've got grass and then sidewalk again. I mean, if we're going to, to the purpose of sidewalk for safe travel, I don't know if that comes into this conversation or not, but...
Yeah, no, I mean, we, I know, I share Mr. Struca's concerns, I mean, it's a danger, it's a danger.
Well, they're going to have to go in the street, and they're going to have to go back in because of the width of that one yard.
Yeah. I mean, we don't, we don't have anything that would require them to install sidewalks onto those properties. We wanted to come and do it, I suppose, because of that.
We could set up, yeah, I mean, we could start a discussion with those people that own those properties. We can do that and see what, but I mean, like, even the, if you go back the other direction, there are homes, there are two or, two or three homes there, and then on the other side of, of the street, we have the Hart's Place and Insurance Place, they can be, yeah, they can be talked to, we can see what we can work out with them. But that is not what, this is about the Burger King.
I understand.
So this needs to be two-piece legislative.
Well, yeah, the first thing is we just need, we need a resolution per the Burger King's request to place a sidewalk here. And then the second thing is whether or not you want to, well, that's the first thing. The second thing is whether or not you want to make changes to those.
Any opposition from your standpoint to their request for where the sidewalk is to be located?
I don't think so. I may not be the best person to ask this. Actually, isn't my code, this is the building code, it's not related to the zoning code, but, you know, Jeff Dunn may be a better source, but I don't think he, he's seen the play, and he's had no objections.
I already spoke to him, yeah, he's okay, I'm just asking you the same question.
Yeah, I don't have any objections. I'll go with Jeff on most things.
So we need to have a piece of legislation first.
So move. All right, second. Okay. There's no other discussion for this resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who say same sign, those in favor. Okay.
And the second item?
The second item is, is we have, as you noticed, this kind of is a problem, every time we want to chase sidewalk, we've got to come to this body rather than maybe where it's better handled, the planning commission and going through that process. So Landon kind of went through the code, both with that and with the driveway cuts. If you look at 90703, this ordinance was passed in 1964, and limits, it's worded archadely, it limit, it doesn't limit the size of the sidewalk, or the size of the driveway entrance, but it makes a presumption that the driveway of 20 feet or less is reasonable. But it doesn't provide a way to get in the driveway that would be more than 20 feet wide if so needed, and especially in a commercial, in and out Burger King with the trucks, deliveries and stuff, they need something significantly wider. So the two things that Landon had put together, the last sheet there, and I'll let him talk about it here, but one was a change to 90504, which basically just said that when sidewalks need to be moved one way or the other, if they're not going to line up with the sidewalks that are already in the block, that the, the planning commission would have the authority to look at those and see what needs to be done. And then the second one is 90703, which again, changes that presumptive, he's recommending a presumptive change from 20 feet to 25 feet residential and 35 feet for commercial, and you can kind of explain where they come from. And then anything that has to be larger than that would then again be referred to planning commission. So not, not trying to hide any changes or variances, but trying to get it in a body that's maybe better suited to hold hearings and look at what all needs to be done and make the approvals that way. So he, Landon did a great job trying to go through this and find those problems and try to answer the question on that.
Bruce? So if there's a problem... So if there's a problem in the neighborhood and the residents that are flooding this property, what happens if they have with the Planning Commission? It is the Planning Commission send out letters to these people. And then the people are able to rebuttal against the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
I mean, just on, you know, city council, we answered everybody.
And that's a good point. The, if you notice, the sidewalk provision currently, like the resolution we just asked, does not have a public notice requirement in it. We just bring it to council and ask for that resolution. By sitting at the Planning Commission, there's a whole process, public notice and hearing and all that sort of stuff. So that's a built-in kind of letting everybody know what's going on mechanism that already exists for other variances and things that didn't exist until the government.
Landon, when I discuss, do we have signs and things that we put out now?
Yes, those can be utilized.
You want to explain them there?
Yeah. Last, or earlier this year, we adopted a new notification process for our Board of Zoning Appeals hearings to where we have to put a notification sign on the property in question two weeks prior to the hearing. But I designed those signs with Rob in a manner in which they could be utilized. Planning Commission, BBSA, public hearings, you know, they can be utilized really for anything. So anytime those signs are in my office, anytime you guys feel necessary for anything, we can draw up one of those signs and put it in the property in question and get reason that.
Or the public note, you will notice there is a sign down here on South Sandusky on the west side. That is for zoning...
Variants.
Variants for a house down here for a business. So that's an example, as you go out, you can go that way and see it on your, on the west side of the street. That's what he's giving an example for, that's what we're trying to do. So that as you drive by, you can see it because our ordinance only said to send it out to within two hundred feet of the proposed property, and none of people would get any notice of it. So anyhow, so you're requesting us to...
Yeah, I mean, these are two of them. It's, I mean, it's not something that has to be done right away, but it's something that, you know, creating issues every time we need to, you know, have a development or something, we hope we have more development. But it's something, just modernizing our code a little bit, providing a venue for public notice and hearing and providing a way to kind of handle it better. So if you want to take time to read it, or if you want to just prove it, I don't know, whichever you prefer. But we've kind of drafted what we think it should look like for both nine oh five oh four and nine oh seven oh three.
I personally think we do a little time to read this if we just got it.
I got another question. We've run into it in the past. Is there any provision that's been a little bit stronger language as to when it develops or comes to town? Now, I'll put a sidewalk in because that's been a source of... It was never, ever equally enforced. Some of them put sidewalks in, and then others, other ones that didn't put sidewalks in.
I think there's language in there for any new commercial development that requires sidewalks. And if I'm not mistaken, for subdivision developments as well. Now, just for a straight-up, you know, single-family residential home being built on a lot, I don't know if there exists a requirement. But I do, off the top of my head, I think commercially and subdivision-wise, they are required to put in sidewalks. Whether or not it's been enforced in the past is a different question.
You may want to look that up on individual homes that need to be built. Because there are certain places in town now where property, where buildings have come down and the people are going to go, be going in and building in older neighborhoods or whatever. We should have something that would cover that. So if you would take that, investigate for us, and bring that back to committee, then that would be appreciated.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, I think we need to table this, portion of this, to investigate a little bit before we make the decision.
I think that we go ahead and go forward with the Berber King.
Work on that.
Yeah, we already did on that. Yeah, just for this part. All right, we're tabled, the second half of them. Okay, the zoning reclassification of South Highland Avenue and Baylor Street properties.
That's what we did again. We did it again.
Yep. Do you have the floor, sir?
Still.
You'll be here for another one of these.
Okay, so I believe Todd has included in your packets, basically, the presentation that I gave to Planning Commission for this very issue. Walking through there, you'll see the area of the request. It's near the intersection of Highland and Southern, and also including on Baylor. It would be an extension of that LIC district, which is the gray, light gray you see there, to include two properties to the north on Highland, and then three other, or two others on Baylor Street that are just adjacent to it. And you can see those on the current zoning page. You'll see how it is currently zoned. And then the proposed changes on the very next page, it kind of gives you an idea of exactly where those changes will take place. So we're essentially adding four lots to that LIC district to allow for Mr. Kennedy to develop the property to use for his landscaping services. The permitted uses, you'll see that what he's... He can explain better the development plan and the exact use that they'll be using. But it'll fit underneath a permitted use in the LIC district of warehousing and distribution. And that allows for storage of materials and those types of things as well. The specific considerations that I wanted to kind of point out. There are larger setbacks in the LIC district, and there are standards that require new structures or new developments to be a certain distance away from residential districts. However, in cases similar to this, if we were to rezone it, those provisions would not be in place, and they would be replaced with the zoning development standards for the most adjacent residential districts. And what that standard is, is that if the plots, the plotted lots within one block of the subject property average less than seventy-five feet in width, and industrial or business uses are located in close proximity, which they are, the provisions which require a minimum of two hundred feet away from a residential district do not apply. And in such cases, they go to the front side and rear yard setbacks for those residences, which would be the R-three zoning district. And in this case, it would be a twenty-foot side yard, or a twenty-foot front yard setback, four-foot side yard setbacks, and a twenty-foot rear yard setback. So he would not be subject to the large distances that are put in place to protect residential areas from industrial development. And with the use just basically being warehousing and storage and that type of thing, we're not seeing any manufacturing, we're not seeing anything like that. The impacts on the surrounding neighborhood likely wouldn't be affected if, you know... It's not important that we have that two hundred feet to protect them from those developable impacts. The other portion would be that if he does have exterior storage of raw or finished goods, so if he wants to store mulch, rock, whatever the case might be, in the LIC district, those are required to be screened. They have to be hidden from view, basically, through fencing or other mechanisms. That he would have to submit a screening plan to the Planning Commission, it would have to be approved, that those things aren't easily visible by the neighboring residences. I would turn it to Dane for further...
Okay, question. So this mulch and stone, where does it fall into the hard-scape issue? I mean, what I'm getting at is, is that, now, I don't know if you're going to put mulch on dirt, or are you going to put it on a concrete slab? Or where I'm going with it is, is okay, now, we're doing all the stormwater on Southern Avenue. Where does this fall into retaining the water on the property? Is stone considered a hard-scape?
I believe that definition is an impervious surface. So I assume that probably would not meet that definition if it's not sitting up top of some kind of concrete pad or drive.
I just was, that's my question is, so is there provisions for stormwater retention as part of this development?
Yeah, he would be subject to the same stormwater regulations that anybody else is when they build a development. And that is...
On the same because it's a business as well.
Right, yeah. He would be subject to the same as anybody else, provided that the development is over five thousand square feet disturber. Or if it's under five thousand square feet and the development takes over twenty percent of the lot, then they are subject to the stormwater regulations. Now, that doesn't mean that he could not hire McKibben Associates to do a study to see if he could apply for a waiver from those. If they say that the increase in runoff would be negligible, they could get a waiver from having to put in any kind of stormwater management. But that is far above my head as far as numbers and math go, so...
This is an existing business, correct?
Yes.
I mean, the business is already located...
There's a building that has been used for a business on, at the end of Baylor that has been used for storage. The additional lot to the north of that would be developed likely. And the two lots that are on Highland that are not a business, one is currently a duplex, and one's a vacant lot, which you would like to build a structure on going forward. One of the bits of this request.
Now, does he own all this property? He owns, Mr. Kennedy owns all this property? Yes, okay.
All right, is there any other questions?
Just to refresh me, as of right now, have the neighbors been contacted for an opinion? Or has that come after we decided to...
That would come after the fact here. If you want to move it to a public hearing, that would be the first notification. Outside of, you know, being broadcast at a public meeting for the Planning Commission. But I believe in, when you guys hold your public hearings, you actually go through the notification process of sending letters to the neighbor or resident.
The two hundred feet plus the signage, yes.
Yep, so that would be...
And then there's a thirty-day wait until we actually have the public hearing.
So that...
They're not approving it this evening, they would just simply be asking for the public hearing to take place. Pardon me, draft legislation? In draft legislation, yes. We have to draw up the draft legislation for this, so that it'll be posted over in your office. It's posted, as it is posted over the zoning office for those thirty days. So the public has an ability to see it. So it's not, the final decision is not this evening. It's just simply to proceed to that public hearing.
Now, if there's no more questions, I would prefer to go ahead and just, you know, pursue and move forward on having a hearing.
Dane, would you like to speak to it, not if they don't want to hear you?
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
He's not a public speaker anyways.
He's the worker.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed with the public hearing and the draft legislation for this zoning change with L-I, from R-three to a LIC. So, right, a second.
Who made the motion?
Chris did. If there's no other discussion, I need to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion passed. We'll request a public hearing. All right, so we got to post this.
Well, it's going to take at least a week to get the draft legislation together, so...
We'll start with the first week of September.
First week of October?
No, I mean, when we, would be, it started the third day, so...
It counts me in first, fourth, third, and October.
But we need that thirty days to...
How about we make it like the eighth, would be a Tuesday?
Of October?
Yes.
Five p.m.?
First, or five p.m. on the Tuesday, the eighth, so second Tuesday.
Yeah, it's August Tuesday.
Yeah, October the eighth, this is Tuesday.
Because ninth is...
Right, that's why I was saying, that's why I was saying Tuesday.
Okay, that's a time.
Okay. Time, five o'clock. Dane, would that work for you?
June 11th, not to the end of October, October the twenty-third. We don't want to sign with registrations.
Okay, so five, we'll make it five o'clock on eight.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Zoning reclassification, new residential use for two fifty-one, West Stone. You might as well just stick a chair there. Back to you, man. And it's in regards to Planning Commission, item was approved by the Planning Commission. And for our review, your council president, VCR City Planning Commission met on Monday, June twenty-second, twenty nineteen. It is requested the following item approved by the Planning Commission be submitted to appropriate council committees for review. And it's proposed zoning reclassification of property located at two five-one West Stone Street, including adjacent properties. And I'm not going to read the parcel numbers. There's one, two, three, or five parcel numbers. And two seventy-three, West Stone from, West Stone Street, from urban neighborhood residential, R-three, to neighborhood business, N-D, city attached. The zoning reclassification is related to the intended development of the VCRS Outreach and Restoration Network, which is BORN, and in quotations, Hope Center. The development would contain several uses, including administrative offices for local nonprofit organizations, a community center, and yet-to-be-determined residential use related to transitional housing for those experiencing homelessness. This residential use would require amending of the zoning ordinances as no such use currently exists as a permitted use. The matters were submitted simultaneously with the proposed residential use, also use being tabled until further information could be provided about the specifics of the intended use. And this is thank you, Mayor Jeff Rees. All right, Landon?
Okay, so this one has more to do with the parking, the zoning reclassification we just spoke about. Much like the other, I think Todd has provided you with a packet for the presentation that I gave to Planning Commission on the matter. You see the area in question, as Mark, Mr. McKibben noted there. It's on West Stone, just north of the railroad tracks of the area that we're talking about. You can see the proposed zoning reclassification, the exact area that this would be taking place in. The uses that they're, that they're projecting for this site, most of them are permitted uses. But what makes this more complicated is the transitional housing residential use that they're proposing. There is not a provision in our code that allows for that type of housing. So what that would require would both be the zoning change itself, as well as the addition of the residential use to the zoning code.
I'd prefer the audience to know, if you look at this, these, this is the old Penn Central Railroad. It's called G York Central. It's the railroad, here's West Stone Street. This is Otto Avenue right here, so it's at the, as you're heading south off of Mansfield Street, right before you get to the tracks, it is the third property and the sixth property south, north of the tracks is where this section comes out. And then all this back here behind it, that has access off of Ethel. Do they have access off of Ethel, this section here?
No, I don't think so.
No.
I think the, what comes out on West Stone Street is, are just driveways. Right. Those are just driveways that they're looking to...
Those would be the access point.
But that's where, but that's the property that's being changed. So you have an understanding where this is at.
It's that whole tree den area back in there.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so, I, I'll let the BORN representatives get into more of the details about their uses. Some additional considerations specifically for the zoning change portion of it. By the textbook definition, it is spot zoning. And along with that comes sometimes challenges. That is when you take a district and plop it down right in the middle of the district that does not have the similar uses. So in this case, we're taking a business district and we're dropping it directly inside and completely enclosed by a residential district. There have been, I mean, there's, there's been challenges in the past that have come up for various spot zoning cases. Typically, the, the factors considered when determining their validity is the size of the, the size of the change, the anticipated public benefit, its consistency with the surrounding zoning uses, and its consistency with the community's comprehensive plan. So that's just something you need to consider as to whether you feel it's proper to, to drop a business zone in the middle of a residential district.
So there is no neighborhood business currently there? We're not abiding anything?
Correct. Not like the previous one where we're extending off of an existing LIC district. This is being directly dropped into a residential district.
Is that legal?
Uh, I would defer to Rob on that. I don't know whether, it's been challenged in court, is all I have read about it.
Of course, it is right across the street from where Schumpf was, or it's in that proximity of where the Schumpf, or the Schumpf business used to be. That's where it was there.
I got a question. You know, you had just brought it up with landscape. Okay, so it's a neighborhood business. And it says the side yard setbacks are, what, 15 feet? But being that it would be, being, being put into a residential neighborhood, is that 15 feet from a side lot? Go down to 4 feet because it's a residential neighborhood?
No. Actually, it increases. If, if the side yards are not adjacent to a district where residences are permitted use, then they're 15 feet. If they are, then they go up to 30 feet. But they're gonna have plenty of room on the site to meet the, the development standards if that's the way you go. But there's a second consideration with that, um, as to whether the neighborhood business district is the best designation for this use. And those discussions, that point was raised at the end of the Planning Commission meeting as to whether it may be more beneficial to simply create a new zoning designation for these uses. My initial recommendation was made to go to neighborhood business district based off the fact that Class 1 and Class 2, Type A group residential facilities are conditional uses in the neighborhood business district. Those uses are related to rehabilitative services to those with developmental disabilities or rehabilitative services with those with drug and alcohol use problems. And, and the specific Type A are for facilities with five or more residences. This use is not similar to those because the group residential facilities are actually called out and defined by the ORC. They're required to go through all these litany of things to meet the standards. But I thought that that was a good jumping off point comparison-wise for this type of housing. If you guys, if, if it may be better served to have a completely new zoning designation, I, I think that's worth looking into, just to kind of accommodate the mixed use we'll see at this development. That's the other thing I wanted to raise with, with the actual zoning change portion of it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why was this spot selected when there's other places that are away from the residence?
You would have to ask the BORN representatives that question. I, I do not know.
Because I have land right next to it. You know, everybody gonna be checked for drugs? What's gonna happen? You have the railroad tracks there, there's a train, traffic's gonna be backed all the way down to the golf course, all the way down past the fairgrounds, which it has happened already.
These are, are questions that are better directed to the BORN representatives. What I would say is that, um, in creating a new use for the code, these points have to be ironed out before it even goes to public hearing. So the legislation will have to be drawn up as to what we are going to require for this residential use before it even goes to the public hearing. And that's, again, legislation's job to, to set out what they, what they need to see.
Does a council members know what that lot looks like back there?
You would have to ask them.
And you know what's back there? Trees, this is a city for trees, isn't it? You're gonna tear them all down, every one of them. There's a place right out there by the farm store.
There was some, the trains were sent through there today, and the kids that get off the bus, they were an hour late because of that train going through there. The parents were all standing down there waiting on them.
An hour, those kids were late getting home. And some of the parents gotta make special arrangements for those kids to be taken care of for their work afternoons. To me, that is a bad spot.
She, I, I, we had a little question. You're, you're just referring that increased traffic due to this-
Increased traffic, drugs. Drugs, we've had enough drugs at that end of town, we don't need more coming in.
You're, you're just referring because of the incident today of the two trains being stopped.
Yeah, that's just now. Backs up, it's gonna be worse. People going in and out, in and out.
All right, that's, that's, that's what she was addressing. I thought that's what you were meaning, that increased traffic with already the problem it has been today. Okay. You know, we're, this hasn't even been approved yet. We're discussing this, this is the first time it's approached to us, so.
So, the, the two things, basically, there's two issues. The zoning redesignation itself would have to take place, whether that is indeed to a neighborhood business district, if that's the route you wanna go, or whether it is to some new zoning designation or, or whatever the case may be. And then the second part would be that that residential use, which does not exist in our code and is yet to be defined by any kind of legislation being put together, has to be approved and into the code as well. So, those are the two considerations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Now, that may be a good time for BORN. Most of these people haven't heard anything about, about the, I mean, for those of us that have been attending other meetings-
That's what I'm gonna say, we need to have that.
Yeah, I think that's where we are right now.
So, anybody from BORN like to present your-
We need your name and address, please.
All right. My name is Tabby Lynn, I live on Mitchton Road. I am a volunteer at U.S.R. Outreach Restoration Network. We are hoping to be able to move our offices over to this location, as well as have a displaced person. The way he's referring to it is just a homeless shelter, but there are many things that make people homeless. As far as, they could have a fire or a flood, or, um, kids out of their house, or their house was condemned. And there are many things that make people and put them in situations they don't know they belong in. So, we're trying to bridge a gap that so many people fall through cracks. And it's not just a shelter for people to just come and go. The people are gonna be drug screening, alcohol screening before they come in. And if they fail them, then they're gonna be going to, um, one of the other things that's already set in place that they can go for help.
Why can't that be closer to one of them places?
Okay, can we just let her have the floor for right now?
So that we, um, and while they're in there, they're not gonna be coming in and going unless they have a job, where they're gonna need to be trained, job skills, that they have to have training. If they need to be able to, um, rebuild, or, or everyone's missing something in our lives. We all have something that is not, um, makes us also, we all have capable of being able to function in our daily lives. Our goal is to try to take people and refocus them, and re, help them retrain and relearn and be able to, um, find a job, and know that they matter, and know that they care, and know that they are part of this community, and that they're not just someone who's been thrown by the wayside. It's not gonna be for, yes, sir?
I have a question.
Yes.
And this might answer some of theirs. Why this particular location?
We have had this, um, I've been with BORN for about a little over a year now. We had property that was donated and to us in the near this location. And the, and amongst finding about, learning about the location of all of that, it was disposed to us, this property. A lot's in. And, um, it was a good place to stay.
I just wanted to know why this particular location, and you answered that you was a, you know, part of the-
To be-
Donation than the others.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to understand. Anybody know any other questions?
If, you are planning on doing, having meals there, correct? For people that are not residents there, or temporary residents?
We're having a warming center, or it'd be like a kitchen, but, um, sort of like, uh, simple meals to be able to fill in for, um, so when they need them. But yes, we only have some meals there.
You had mentioned earlier that you were in contact with different groups in, in town that would be providing breakfast and lunch and dinner there. Is that correct?
Yes.
They need to know the whole picture of what's going in there, of, so they can get an idea of what activity is going to be taking place. Is it going to be just one day a week? Is it gonna be every day of the week? Is it going to be 24 hours a day?
They're, they're gonna be there 24 hours a day. They have a program, when they come into the program, it's, it's set up so that their day is structured. They're not gonna just come in in the morning and sign out in the evening. There is a program they're gonna have to go through that is, um, that works with them on bio studies or job skills, or, um, training, or helping parenting classes, and other things that they may need. And it's set up for like 180 days. First one is 30 days, and then 60 days and 90 days. At each section, there is, um, they have to be evaluated. And if they, they don't, they need to be up to what each section requires before they commit to the next one. And by the time they're done, our goal is to hopefully that they have a job, they have their children, if they have them, back in school, that they have their lives pretty much back in order. They've learned how to finance, and they've learned how to function as a normal, every, of the rest of us do. Not everyone knows.
Have you checked into how much it's gonna cost to have the woods, all them trees, more down, how much?
Roughly about $25,000 to have the land cleared.
Have the land cleared. Who's, who's putting the building up? Is that gonna be cheap or not?
Well, the-
The town that constructed-
Yes. Wait, we're, we're, let's stay focused on this zoning. We, we don't need to know what their cost is. That, that's irrelevant right now. We need to know your feelings of the facility being there, that's what we need. And we're gonna go into discussing other things about this. So we don't need to know about costs of removal and everything, that's, that's fine.
I don't see why this zoning should be done before we have a hearing, or whatever you wanna call it, with the residents that live around there. Well, what's gonna happen if the zoning goes through and say the residents don't want it? That means they can do it anyhow?
The zoning doesn't go through without a public hearing. That means your input, okay? We, we don't, we don't vote on it without a public hearing. It's against the law. That's our, that's our order. We have to have a public hearing to change any zoning. So you're gonna have the input on this. We don't need to know what their cost of their building. We don't need to know the cost of their clearing the land. That, that's irrelevant right now. We just need to know your input, what their facility's gonna do, what it's gonna provide, what impact the neighborhood is gonna be, and your input as the residents in that neighborhood, let alone the rest of the city. It's not just limited to them. So, we're not, we don't need to know the cost and everything of that right now. So that's, let's move on to the-
Are they gonna have a painting on?
When we, when it's a neighborhood business, there are, there are things required in that that would have to be done. So, we'll get to that, you know, so, let's, you got a question?
I have a question. You had mentioned that some people become homeless because of a fire or a flood. Is this facility gonna be set up for children, do you think?
Yes.
Or, okay. I wonder, because you said they were just gonna be put right into a six-month, 180-day program. That's just for people that have problems. But it is one of your facility where the children could be housed with their family?
Yes. It's not just for single men or single women. It would have areas for families as well.
And our focus is families and veterans.
Okay, wait a minute. Lisa, I know who you are, but you need to say your name and address, so.
Lisa Alsop, 1323 North Sineski Avenue.
Okay, and you're, both your names and addresses.
I'm Jeff Beamer with Jana Construction, 2141 Skirra 19.
I'm Eliza Cole, the executive director of BORN, and I live 1143 Rose Hill.
And we need to get yours.
You ready?
Yeah.
Lucille Dix, 201 West Stone Street. We own lots right next to where this was to happen.
I've got two questions. First from Mr. Howard. As Mr. Hill mentioned, then one of the options is to create a, a new zoning district. If that were to happen, does that look at differently in the court? That spot, if you were to create a new zoning district and drop it into that same spot?
No, I think you're gonna face the same challenges. It, it, it won't matter. Because, if you were creating a different residential use and keeping it in the same character, that, that's one thing. As you, as you get farther away from that, um, then you, your justification for making the change becomes more tenuous. So, when there are legal challenges to spot zoning, what the courts look at is the purpose and the impact on the community and the neighbors and that. And so the, the more different it is, um, then, then the more likely successful challenges. So, you know, if you went from double family houses to triple family houses, or if you went from residential to industrial.
My, my goal in answering this question, obviously, is not to slow down the process, but Mr. Hill raised a good point, that I think we need to put our ducks in the right row, in the right order. And I think we need to address the issue of either changing and finding a place in our code that allows such use, or determining whether we wanna change the zoning district, or determining whether we wanna create a new zoning district. I think that we need to really address that issue first.
Well, and one of the, and I think if Mr. Hill could address it, one of the issues with respect to the neighborhood business, using the neighborhood business, we're talking about adding a, a new conditional use to that. So you would be adding a new conditional use to all neighborhood businesses. And I don't know if that is what you intend for this. So creating a district with specific parameters.
And what would your recommendation to us be for our next move to this by, to make sure that we are doing this properly?
Unfortunately, it'd probably be another working session to kind of sit down and hash those things out. You'd want specific detail. And our code, we already have a similar situation in our code. We have one, we have, it's called mobile home-
Residential?
Mobile home residential. We have, and it's, it's a one-off, very singular, isolated thing. So we have some provision in our code for a similar single designation use. But you're going to want, in my opinion, you're going to want to narrowly as possible define what you want that new code to be and specify, because, um, you know, if you decide to go forward with it, chances are you're gonna face these challenges, maybe, as to whether or not it's an appropriate spot zoning.
I think that's where we're at. The, the portion of that I neglected to mention, um, if you were to go the route with adding it as a conditional use in an existing district neighborhood business, for example, the, the vetting process there would simply be, as any other conditional uses, they would just have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for that. they would just have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for that. If it were to be either something different than that or, for example, a, a different zoning designation, then every time a similar facility wanted to do something like this, they would be subject to the full process that this is going through right now, which would be planning commission, planning committee, public hearing, planning committee, you know, the whole nine yards. So in doing it that way, I think it would add, um, additional layers of oversight. And for something like this type of subject matter, that may not necessarily be a bad thing.
I, I do have a question. Do you have tentative plans drawn up?
Including a timeframe, I guess.
Yeah, then timeframe.
Currently, right now, we do have preliminary plans drawn, but in my latest meeting with Borne and Eliza, we're gonna scale it back some. Um, currently, the plan is gonna be including the administrative offices. It'll have a small event center for sixty people, we decided, to where she can run it out, have income come in to the facility. The, uh, it will have a warming kitchen, is a better term to put it. It's where, you know, she would hire or bring in people that would already have the food prepared and serve out of this somewhat warming kitchen. Um, there's no cooking facilities on site. There's no commercial kitchen, nothing of that nature. And she'd have a courtyard in the center of it so that people can, it's got pavers outside and, and, you know, it's a higher ceiling so that it's windows around and let in natural light. And then around the backside, that's where the, the displaced members would be. You know, we'll have four, four bunks for men's, four bunks for women, and four areas for families. Each section, men's cannot go into the family, cannot go into the women's. The family can't go into the men's, can't go into the women's. The women can't go into the men's and families. They're all gonna be segregated apart to where there's nothing, nothing's gonna happen, okay? But everybody has access to the full, full facility, okay? But at this time, there are preliminary plans. But we're going to revise them to a smaller scale because of, we think, budget purposes. But what we gotta do for zoning, for detention ponds, for landscaping, 'cause land, I think, up against residential, we gotta put all landscaping fencing around there, you know, as far as like bushes and stuff so high. But I think we're gonna scale everything back on the building portion to accommodate the detention pond landscaping and obviously parking lot stuff like that. But as far as budget, there's no budget set right now. The only I've got was the, the land clearing, so.
That's a problem. We don't need no budget. We just, could you, when we have our next one, could you bring us like a preliminary sketch? Just the layout?
We, she has, she has the preliminary sketches now, but keep in mind, this is way over what we're gonna be doing.
Correct. I mean, when you, when you do revise, when we have our next meeting, because we're not gonna have another meeting 'cause we can't decide this tonight. And we'll need to have discussions with the public and with you also. But if you could bring the revised sketches so that they can see it, we can see it, your tentative plans, and we can discuss this further.
Now, one thing, let me say this. I've also been in touch with the American Red Cross. We're gonna be making the facility a storm shelter as far as, you know, I should say the full facility, we're gonna have a portion of it to be able to be run off a generator. Should any kind of tornado come through or something like that, that will be a storm shelter for people to go to.
How big would that be?
It's only gonna be a portion of the building, but I can't tell you the overall portion until we get the final plan put together.
We are required to have a certain, has to be a certain size.
Yes, there are, the American Red Cross has guidelines to what I have to meet to accommodate for it to be a storm shelter. And a portion of it will be one.
All right. I think we need to table this issue to
Can I just, real quick for you? I just got a couple things. So we've worked closely, I mean, we've been doing this for three or four years. You know, Borne's been in existence five years and this isn't something that we just brought up the other day. We've been working very closely for probably the last year and a half with the Columbus Shelter Board. And I don't know if you know who they are. But the Columbus Shelter Board basically governs all of Ohio's emergency shelters, their policies, their plans. And in doing that, we do not have to, because of how we're, we're approaching this, follow those, but we have taken the opportunity to meet with them and say, hey, we're gonna do our due diligence and no matter what, even though we're not required to, because we are not getting government funding for this project as of right now, um, we are still going to do that. We're gonna follow all the codes out of good faith for that. One of the programs that they've strongly suggested us to enforce is what we're calling a good neighbor program. And a part of that is because meeting with them and talking with them, they go, they're, they have fifty-six different houses in Franklin County that are in residential areas. So it's been great for us to be able to go back to them and say, what are some issues that you guys have dealt with? And the number one thing they said is to develop this good neighbor program in those programs where basically the neighborhood that's directly affected has buy-in and input. Um, the first step of that was Borne did send out letters back in April, March, March or April? Somewhere around there. Landon gave us the addresses. He told us we're only required to go two hundred feet. Uh, we went three hundred feet out to all the residents, sent them a letter with our intended purpose, asking for feedback ahead of time. Um, and we, our plans are to put a coalition together of these neighbors to have meetings with them to, we want their buy-in. We don't wanna be in an area we're not welcome in. I mean, no one wants to do that.
Right.
So we are taking initiative. We are taking steps forward to make sure that the last thing our organization, uh, wants to do is to represent core league to the community or to be something that people don't want to be a part of. This, the whole purpose behind this is a community-based center and we want all of you guys to be a part of that and want to be a part of it. So we have no intentions to upset or offend or do anything to hurt our community.
All right, if there's no other questions, I believe we're gonna table this to the next meeting.
Let's see what information we need gathered up and, uh, bring back for the next meeting.
Right. If, if, like I said, if you can get us the tentative plans, it'll be at our next council meeting, which would be the, maybe
You said September fifth?
Yeah. So you can cut September fifth, seven o'clock. At six o'clock. We will discuss this again then. So, who's on to the next issue?
That's a nice name.
Landon, here we go.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, we've got a letter addressed to the city council regarding some of the restrictions of, for non-performing residential lots and non-residential zoning districts. Your Mad President, I have received several applications recently from applicants wishing to construct accessory structures on their legally non-performing residential lots located in non-residential zoning districts. These accessory structures are subject to the development standards for the zoning district in which they are located. Consequently, these properties face developmental, development restrictions for accessory structures that are likely to be much more restrictive than the standard, their standard residential lot. Counterparts, I have attached a copy of the study provided an example of the specific issue. It goes on and it, it's basically talking about
I can explain it if you like. There's a lot of code language in that letter that, um, comes off as confusing and I feared that may be the case. The case study that I attached there that should've been in your packet, I kinda put this together, you coded that, um, to kinda spell it out a little clearer. I've had a couple of applications for, for building permits come in and, and these are single-family residences that are located in commercial zoning districts. In, in those cases, while there is a provision that allows for them to extend their residence so they can in large extend, build onto their house, provided that it matches the development standards of the most adjacent zoning district, residential living district. There is nothing like that for accessory structures. So for the case that I, that I called your attention, it's one twenty-five Gay Street. He's located in the general business district. In the general business district, the side yard setback for structures is twenty feet. Accessory structures are subject to the same side yard setbacks as any other structure. His lot is thirty-seven feet wide. If he has to adhere to twenty-foot side yard setbacks, he has negative three feet in developable area. I, I think, and, and this, this case has applied for a zoning variance, as has the other one, and actually, those are both of the signs that are posted currently. Both of these issues are related to this. I, I think the easiest answer in this is simply provision along the lines of the one mentioned, uh, one one five one point oh four C, which allows for the extension of the residence itself. Provision similar to that, um, for accessory structures in non-residential zoning districts for single-family dwellings. Something in that spirit, I think, could kind of, I think it's unfair to, to put twenty, twenty-foot setbacks on a property like this.
First, I, I honestly, I just wanted to say thank you because I've noticed in the time you've had this job, you've done a lot of proactive things like this to bring things forth before they become an issue. I just wanna say I appreciate, you know, your efforts for that.
I appreciate that.
Honestly, I, I would like to request draft legislation that makes that change, that puts the accessory structures in line with the, uh, the existing structures.
And there was one thing that I wanted to add. Another case that happened a while back that only popped into my head this afternoon when I was preparing for the meeting. But, um, single-family residences in the apartment residential district face very similar issues and we've had a couple of those come through as well. They have, I, I can't remember off the top of my head what the setback is, but it's, it's very similar, larger side yard setbacks. I would like to see this include for single-family residences that are located inside the apartment residential district as well. So it's not only residential lots and non-residential lots, um, but also in the apartment residential.
I meant my question to also include that. Do I have something?
Sorry.
There's no other passing. You've got a lot on your plate right here.
Well, this is, this is draft legislation, not actual legislation.
Correct. Requesting draft legislation.
For your next committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me just say that this one may be the committee, after the next committee meeting. And we're, I mean, it's gonna take some fleshing out a little bit to
Fair enough.
To put together.
In time that you can repair it.
Yeah.
So would that, uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those are closed, same sign? All right. I've tried to go through the first time, so let's go with the, um, temporary signs, codified ordinance, uh, eleven ninety-one point oh seven, temporary signs.
That's why you keep the package in order?
Well, I moved that one right a little bit. Okay, um, swift campaign season nearing, we are beginning to see sign posts around the city. Candidates and levy committees are reminded of the city of the SARS ordinances regarding signs. Although signs concerning candidates for elective, elective office or public issue do not require permit, they are still subject to provisions of chapter one nine one one of the SARS codified ordinance. Et cetera, et cetera, please take note. Uh, it, dealing with the size is the issue. It's, uh, eleven ninety-one oh seven, the general requirements, temporary signs, and it's, uh, section A, areas less than twenty square feet in area are permitted, provided said signs are secured at each corner, point, and or bend as free movement. So, I don't know. Where, what is the, who is, we have an issue with this. So Landon, you have a little more information on this one?
We, Landon issued that, well, he Yeah, so the sign on the building on North Sandusky Ave was brought to my attention. In looking at the code, it was my interpretation that it was in violation and these ordinances maybe have not been enforced to their full extent in the past. But in an effort to do my job with integrity, it's my intention to enforce them as they're written. I may have missed them in primary season, but I was new.
You have new baby too.
Yeah, there you go.
Sleep deprived.
So, um, the question being like, like Mark said, and the sign ordinance honestly is, is confusing to me, so I'm sure it's not clear to, to many other people what they're trying to accomplish. Any political sign is, is technically by definition a temporary sign. And although they do not require permits, they are subject to the regulations for the rest of the sign ordinances. That means that for temporary banner signs, they have to be twenty square feet or fewer. And the signs in question that were brought to my attention are obviously larger than that. There's also, and, you know, enforcing that, we've long in this community seen signs in the free lawn and, and those are also in violation, just as we spoke earlier. Signs are not supposed to be placed in the right of way. Those areas are the right of way. So that's something else that would need to be enforced as well. I would leave it up to you guys as to how you want that interpretation to be made, how you want the enforcement to take place, whether you want to change the ordinances or have me enforce them as they're written.
I, I spoke with the law director today about this and, uh, you know, I, I'm correcting, I speak wrongly, but you advised me that it's not up to this body to determine anything with enforcement that's out of your office. All that this body really can do is decide whether the, uh, this, the ordinance as written or make changes to the ordinance.
Yeah, uh, you know, that's just kinda the way the legislative process works. You guys pass a law, um, the, uh, Landon and Gordon Grove are property maintenance inspectors. They're kind of the police. They patrol it and then ultimately refer to me for prosecution if it got to that point. So, uh, you know, determining, you know, what you want those requirements to be, it's, it's kinda up to you guys. The, um, the twenty-square foot for the temporary signs was something, we had a ad hoc sign committee two or three years ago, I guess?
Four years ago.
Four years ago. Uh, we had an ad hoc sign committee that went for about a year. It was, it was in the community and they got together and that's, that sign ordinance was completely something that they redrafted. Our prior sign ordinance had a lot of regulations with respect to timing and placing and things like that for political signs that really the law kinda changed on. You know, you can't really regulate the content of the speech. So, um, you know, that's, that's the law that's on the books right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think one of the things that we, we need to keep in mind is especially the billboard sign, side, size, signs. We have a regulation on those specifically. Uh, there have been a couple that, uh, when a certain building was sold downtown, they wanted to move it like, uh, on further down the street and put up a big billboard and they were not given permission to do it. They, we wanted to keep that kind of out of the downtown business area. That, uh, that there's, there's some that, uh, that we have granted permission for. You know, the one, you see out on the way to Wal, out to Walmart, the one over there on Southern Avenue by, uh, Massey's. There's, uh, the one, uh, downtown right There's the one downtown right of the railroad tracks. So those have all been through the process of getting permission to put something that big out there. And the, basically, what brought it all to the head was aesthetics, which is why they turned down that one. Bruce, I don't know if you recall that one or not, that it was down there on the size where Kroger Gas Station is now. There was one on the size of that side of that building that they asked to move to a... And we said no. That where they wanted to put it, it just did not fit in what we wanted our downtown area to look like.
That's why the old brick building used to be there?
Yeah, it was the big building for a while. The great sky. Yeah, yeah. You know, and so that is one of the things that we had looked at, and it's purely aesthetics as to how it looks when somebody comes into our town. What do we have, what do we want to have, the homey look in the downtown area, how we wanted to have. We cleaned it all up with the ARR A project. We took out, you know, all those overhead lines that were going down through town and everything else to give our city a nice, clean look. And that is something I think that we still want to maintain as far as Besar's is concerned. We don't want to put up things that are going to take away from that look. We have other things we know we need to do. We have other properties, why we're working to get properties taken care of, and we know there are more that need to be done in the downtown area. We can only do so many, we only have so much money that we can get in and take care of some of those things. But I'm just throwing this out there, you need to know what has happened in the community up to this point, and what the other former councils had looked at and said that this is what they were looking at and why they were looking at it.
I will say that, you know, recently, four years ago, a committee took this in and worked on it. But the fact that the zoning administrator says that it's confusing, maybe it doesn't need a little polishing clarification, not rewriting, but understanding of what it is. So that might be something to look at doing. And then one of the things that came out of my conversation with Mr. Rattler today was the 20-square foot, maybe extending at the 32-square foot, so that if you have a four-by-eight sheet of plywood, that it fits on that rather than cutting down. It's one of the things that he suggested today, so... But I don't know, is the ad hoc committee able to be revived? Would we create a new ad hoc committee? Do we, how do we go through and take what he's called confusing and look at it so that it can be more easily understood?
And I think also to make a lot of our businesses and people that are currently in town putting different things up to realize that there are regulations as to how to do this, and you do need to come up and let us know that they're getting put in and, you know, and giving us a timeframe. You know, a lot of it comes down to, especially if something is being advertising, like at the Sprague's House or something over there, and they're putting up a temporary sign up front to advertise for the Norton Days and things like that. The city should be aware of that before a big sign has been, you know, purchased and put up out there, that we need to make the businesses. And, you know, working with maybe the Chamber of Commerce and with some things like that would be a good way to get the word out to a lot of our businesses that are doing these things. We just went through the whole thing with the United Methodist Church and that signage that they wanted to put up over there at their center, and we worked through it, and we got it, you know, got it taken care of, you know. Thank heavens, it was hairy, it happened to be on that church board and also on VZA that said, you know, "We need permission to do this, and we need to look into it." So those are the kind of things, and a lot of it comes down to just better communication, communication, communication.
Kurt, you have a question?
I want to, well, Kurt Fankheller, 1675 South Sandusky. I want to point out that the law director previously said that all temporary signs are subject to a 20-square-foot size limitation. I've read through the code, that only applies to banner temporary signs. Freestanding signs and wall signs, they're temporary in nature. There is no size restriction in the code. I sent that to everybody on council earlier today, and I sent it to the law director.
Yeah, I would disagree with your reading of the statute. There are temporary signs and there are wall signs. And wall signs are defined as permanent signs. Think of the one that's on the side of FC Bank or Little Athens. They have permanent wall signs, and those are not subject to the 20-foot. The temporary signs, all temporary signs, are subject to the 20-foot. So there's a distinction between a temporary sign and a wall sign, in that a wall sign is considered a sign that's permanent.
I think that, you know, I respect your opinion of your interpretation. I think you're reading that wrong, and if you attempt to remove the sign, it's already there. I can guarantee you, this is heading towards a legal battle, and your job is to keep the city out from legal battles.
Well, yes, my job is to protect the city from legal battles, but if somebody's doing something unlawful, you also have to enforce that, so... You know, I think we're making a legal battle over the people that were just arrested on Wall Avenue today, but we don't let them get away with it because we don't want to get a legal battle.
So the permanent wall signs, from what I read, have a 500-square-foot limitation?
I'm not sure. I just got a copy together.
Non-commercial signs, including but not limited to political signs, which are temporary in nature, are permitted in all districts. And those are those which are, you know, not typically permanently affixed by that definition. Permanent signs have their own general requirements, which include wall signs, canopy and awning signs, projecting signs, freestanding, blah, blah, blah. Temporary signs, which by their definition these campaign signs are, are subject to the general requirements for temporary signs, which banners have to be less than 20 square feet. There is no provision that allows for a wall sign temporarily. Those are only permanent by the code. There is something that allows for one temporary freestanding changeable copy sign shall be permitted in non-residential districts per parcel. But there's no, there's no regulations related to it. So I would agree with Rob's assessment of that. His interpretation of the code, I would agree with that.
Dan, you have a question?
Okay, I just wanted, my experience, you know, that was discussed the other day at the city council. And when I first put a sign on our building, I came up here and seen Mr. Ross actually say, "I would make a pay for premium." I said, "Nope, it's a campaign, it's temporary, don't need to commit." Okay. So I came up, got the skinny on it, and then I put it up. The other thing is, I understand that signs had been there and overlooked, but by the same token, a lot of times I pick speed up and down the street, and then it's overlooked, or I don't get caught, and then, but that doesn't mean it's not the law. So, and then the third thing that, all this whole discussion, is if, if we're putting, if we're not putting a lot of the signs in the tree lawn, then, I mean, that's going to be a mess with the state and all the, every time they sign somebody's house or put... Every time they do landscaping or... Yeah, that's going to be a mess, so, but that's your bag, so...
Yeah, and that's one of the things, we try to stay away from the right-of-way and tree lawn issue unless it, you know, becomes a safety issue. Because of that, we have a lot of houses that set, you know, that their only front yard is the tree lawn. So we try to stay away from that where we can, and, you know, there's been a few that we've dealt with over the years where it just, you know, was clear that it was a problem, but we haven't had to litigate any of those. I think everybody's kind of...
I don't know that at all.
One of the years... Anyways, so that's an issue that we've tried to, you know, it's there when we need it, especially in areas of safety and things like that, if there's complaints. We try to be cognizant of the fact, especially, you know, except that's it, so. Try to sell your house.
Lee said you heard that.
Is there, Lisa, I'll set, I told you where the... Is there a packet of information that's given to people when they decide to run to office, run for office with, like, this list of rules and...
Yeah, there is information that's given, that's controlled by the State Board of Elections and the County Board of Elections that...
It doesn't have anything about where you can place your signs?
Well, other than on trees.
Correct.
Yeah, trees are a no-no.
Right, but I mean, it doesn't say anything, you have to still apply. You have to abide by the city's, or wherever you're at. They can't put it in there because they don't know what it is. And it differs from one place to the next, Guy versus Crestline versus here. It can be tough for the candidate to get something out.
Just a suggestion on the tree lawn signs, I'm guilty of having placed a political sign in my tree lawn, so I hope that we don't cite me or anything. But just a suggestion that maybe something in the language that we don't immediately remove the signs without attempting to notify the homeowner so that the signs aren't just being plucked out of the yard without notice and...
Which is what the state does.
Right.
If you look at the state right of way, the state removes them.
Right. I think you want to avoid the appearance of, you know, well, we're looking for somebody signed to pull. You know, we want to give a homeowner a chance to keep their sign hidden in the yard.
Our code has provision for notice, and it actually requires us if we remove the sign to keep it so that it can be picked up and reused in the case that we have to remove one.
I heard you had a question.
A permanent wall sign can be put up with a building permit. So in the case of the... The big sign in question, Mr. Hill, or Landon, could we apply for a permit to make a permanent billboard on the side of that property and then therefore be in compliance?
Theoretically, if it's a permanent changeable copy sign, provided it meets the provisions as it relates to permanent wall signs, I would assume so. I mean, without digging into it.
But don't those require that they can't be more than 30%?
33% of the face of the building wall or more than 500 square feet, that's the fact. Okay.
Yes, Dan?
Well, well...
You say "we," so is that your sign?
I'm thinking about putting up some signs myself, and so I'm looking for future here. And also, I want to say that an alternative good place for the sign, if it has to be taken down from goodies, would be on the side of a semi-trailer parked in front of Lee's Comfort Shoes, I think would be a great place for those signs, because that's where this is headed. That's what this is all about.
Excuse me?
Excuse me, gentlemen, please, please, we don't need this confrontation in here.
I have nothing to do with this.
If you want to continue with this, he hasn't said a word about any of this. You're the one that brought it up. That subject is dropped right now, or you're leaving.
This is about the zoning ordinance, is all it is. It's not applying to, it's not applying to any...
I would like to make it on the record, I have said nothing, and Mr. Hill can, and Mr. Rattler, I made absolutely no comment on this sign, and I just want that to go in the public record.
It's there.
All right.
It's there, thank you.
Thank you. He hasn't spoken yet, so...
Hill, 205 North Spring Street. It sounds to me like this issue is pretty much pertaining to political signs. And I think that political signs, being temporary in nature anyways, typically no more than 90 days, should have no restriction on their size or really where they're placed as long as they do not create a public nuisance. I think small political signs that's put in the tree lawns should be acceptable, basically being a safety issue, as if those signs are placed further back in the residential lawns, drivers going down the street are straining more to look at those signs and potentially be more of a safety hazard.
Right.
That's all, thank you.
I agree, although it isn't obstructing the intersection view for somebody, I wouldn't see a problem with the tree lawn, but... To my point I made earlier with Mr. Hill stating it is somewhat confusing, I think we need to figure out what the plan is. How do we go back through that and polish it up so that it is a little less confusing? What is your suggestion? Kind of asking Mr. Rattler for his opinion on the best way to go about that. Should we call another ad hoc committee to get input from the public and...
You can, I mean, there... You know, to define what parts of it you find confusing and try to alleviate those, it's, some of it I read is pretty clear, so, you know, with the issue that come up, that was brought up to land, and I think it's pretty clear with respect to that, but...
I just, after speaking with him today, he mentioned that it's something that's a little confusing. That's why I asked the question.
No, I, yeah, I think that's fine, you know, as you and I discussed, you know, the 32 versus the 20, I think is clear, is, you know, that's...
I think it just makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, that, you know, it's off the rack versus custom.
Yeah. Last circular saw right there.
Landon, we have any money, parts that you find confusing. You've got it here, it's available online, it's available on the city website to go out and look at this, read through it, and if you would like to provide my, or the office with what areas that you see as being confusing, we will gladly get all that gathered up together and so that we can all go through it.
We could ask you to do the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well... Meanwhile, finally the journalists, is there any other discussions?
All right, really?
We might need to turn it to you. I will adjourn at 7:47.
All right, 7:47, we'll call Health and Safety Committee to order. The first item up is a liquor license transfer. This is from where Mr. Ridgeway purchased the suburban land, so it's a transfer from Besar Suburban Knights Incorporated to Crawford County Ohio Entertainment LLC, doing business as suburban land. We have the option to either request a hearing or to not request a hearing, so...
I make a motion to...
That does include the patio if it's out there at suburban land.
I do, I make a motion to forego the hearing.
Motion to forego the hearing, no second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Trupka. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? All right, no hearings requested, that motion passes. Second item up is traffic control, on my page, just, I will throw it over to Mr. Hill.
Hi, yes, so this, there's no action needed by council this evening, no miss. We had a referral on Tuesday, the request of the county to raise a statement on Lincoln Highway West from 35 to 45, to manage it, no claims. I spoke with the administrative assistant over the administration, and this has not gone through the traffic commission yet, so it needs to do that, so that is held on hold for the time being. Meanwhile, we have the draft ordinance attached here with all the other traffic changes that we haven't discussed in the past couple of months. The only thing that's not included in this draft is the intersection of Marion Beal and Fairview. That has to be changed, and I spoke to the law director on this, and we have to amend and repeal some ordinances from several decades ago. That has to be included, and then we can bring this up for, on September 3, and that's really all there is to that.
I'll get this to you as soon as we can, so you can see the additions that are going to be put into this, okay?
Thank you.
Any else to come before Health and Safety? If not, we'll recess that at the 7:49.
Oh, Public Lands and Buildings. We've been calling Public Lands and Buildings at 7:49. My motto is keep the program on the table. Memorial tree program, I'm thinking that might be there.
Yes, that's me. I'm, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking on behalf of the Tree Commission, uh, who is, we've referred this in the past, I can't remember the second one, but for me and Mr. Hill, they let me know.
March eighteen.
March of this year. Yeah, um, the Tree Commission has come up with an idea, they would like to do a memorial tree program, um, and it would be, you know, be very common today after a loved one or a friend passes and send memorials in, uh, you know, to different charities and, uh, we've had some inquiries about this in the, in the public. Um, and, uh, what we, what we would like to do, or the board would, the official would like to do is, is purchase shade trees, larger shade trees, replace maybe the ones that have died in the, uh, the parks and, uh, we purchase by friends, family members, organizations, uh, remember every deceased loved ones. And, uh, we would initially, the idea is to plant, you know, try to get the park back to what it was and all another lions, harms and, uh, and then, uh, then it could be expanded to other designated areas in the city as needed. Uh, the cost that the Tree Commission would like to consider would be from a hundred dollars to three hundred fifty, depending on the size of the tree. And the monies, uh, would be placed in a tree maintenance fund. It would be a break even program, it wouldn't be meant to make a profit. Uh, the idea would be to memorialize that person, we would take a picture, it would not be a plaque associated with it, it's for obvious reasons, number one, the cost and number two, you don't want the park full of plaques everywhere. A picture of the tree location along with a, a certificate will be placed in a book here at City Hall in the mayor's office and, uh, for future reference. Um, the intention is, uh, I would imagine twofold, for the memorializing, the memorialization of a, of a resident that's deceased and second to, uh, you know, try and help supplement some of the, uh, tree maintenance slash shade tree improvements that we're trying to do in the city now, working to the future. Um, and it's, 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 it's anticipated that, you know, we get a hundred dollars and want to buy a hundred dollar tree. If somebody wants to get three trees, you know, at a hundred dollars, we would go buy three hundred dollar trees. The idea is not to make money on the, uh, memorial, but actually, like I said, just break even on it and, uh, to help the citizens of U.S. authorities at the same time. So I don't know what the next step would be, um, how, maybe Mr. Radler could.
My, yeah, my recommendation on this would, would be two things. One, we have Joyce check and make sure, set up the separate funding on that, if, if they're okay. Uh, and second, then, you know, having some guidelines, you know, what, you know, what the costs are, what kind of trees and, you know, how someone signs up for it and qualifies and all that sort of thing. I mean, there are, you know, we wanna make sure that when somebody buys a memorial tree, it's done properly and, uh, and then in the long term, you know, what happens if the tree dies, you know, and that sort of stuff.
I, I.
Yeah, so, but just, you know, some basic guidelines and some, you know, just, you know, a policy and how it's coming, comes down.
I, I, I agree and also, but you also gotta put a time limit on the tree because how long is the long, the longevity of a tree? Right, I mean, when you put like, it's only gonna be effective for, a certain tree lives only fifty years.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah, put a. Yeah. Renewal lease.
Put, I'd make it a renewable, a renewable lease.
Yes, I, uh, that they could, you know, I don't know, something to that, but.
But I'm sure there's some other towns that have something of similar, so we can plagiarize.
I'll, I'll research, we'll research that and we'll plagiarize and get back with everything. Is there any comments on it, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Just, I, I don't know, I guess my only question was, uh, is it just for U.S. residents? Is it for?
No, no, I think it could be, uh, you know, any, you know, county residents, I would say.
Or anybody who had relatives that were from, or anybody in the county, right?
I would, I would think that would be.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that's the things you have to put in, you know, you want.
Okay, county residents?
Joe from Hope Tucket, yeah, a memorial tree.
Take your money and a tree.
I'm, I'm all for it.
Well, hey, hold on, so you're trying to stand that. Do we say county, you wanna go outside the county?
No, I don't know, I, I'm just saying, that's something you have to decide. I, I don't care, I don't care, but I don't want down below someone to say, you know, I couldn't do it because I live here, or.
What do you think, huh? I, I think, I think let's steal some from some other places that already have something similar in place and kinda, kinda look at, let's work for them and what problems they have and change it.
Yeah.
And put it beyond us.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll, um, adjourn at seven fifty-five.
Here we have called the Finance Committee to order at seven fifty-five P M. We have the ODOT paving of Picker Road, um, this was fast, cast and plating, or, we are blessing for the additional, um, six hundred, uh, Joyce has a, you know, yeah, the ODOT paving of State Route Four North and Picker Road has increased in the original estimate, so she's requesting an additional six thousand to cover that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. In seconds, um, appropriation. We have received an insurance of the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for the fire loss of one twenty-five to Horn Avenue and that needs to be appropriated. Um.
The law director? Yeah. It was a, a loss of property?
Yeah, that's just, that's, there are fire loss, uh, ordinance that requires insurance of housing money with us to ensure the, the house is torn down. I don't think I actually knew about that fire, but, um, you know, we hold that until property be fixed or demolished and, you know, we refund it to the property.
Seven.
Second.
First by Kevin, second by Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, now, one other thing is that you, you also have to approve that ODOT paving of Picker Road, the project itself. You've, you've done the money part of it, but it's also up to you to approve the project.
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
I'll second.
First by Kevin, second by Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, um, I will recess the Finance at seven fifty-seven. Do we have any public participation? No?
I enjoy this.
We have regulars here.
We've got a fun place today, bring a company's text. The last one we went to, they said they were gonna look into it, we walked out and they went on ahead and did what they wanted to do. So let's look there, I'm glad you guys will table things so we can discuss it.
I make a motion.
Second.
Turn to Chairman.
First by Mark, second by Kevin, and we will adjourn at seven fifty-eight P M.